Howdy guys, Rupi here! Welcome back to Pokémon Violet: The Indigo Discs! Last part, we uh, we finished up the main story. We uh, we found uh, Terapagos and uh, we had a pretty cool battle with it. And um, yeah, pretty cool. As you can see, we're um, we're back at the terrarium because there's uh, there's a couple of things I wanna do here before um, I get onto the thing I wanna do in this part. Um, first part is um, in between uh, after last episode, I um, I found um... I found um, I- I found uh, Iron Boulder and uh, Iron Crown. The Paradox Tarachyon and Cobalion. And uh, yeah, they uh, they look really cool, they're really cool! I feel like, I feel like, I know they um, I know a lot of people aren't all that um, they're not too, too, you know, up high about the um, the future Paradox Pokémon, but honestly, I think these are some of the best designs for um, Paradox, for the Paradox Pokémon. I think they're, they're really cool. And so uh, yeah, we found them and um, I'm not sure if Perrin has anything to say about them, cuz I did um... Yeah, she um, I think she might have, might have something to um... Oh, yep, she's got something to say. Ah, F14, that Pokémon, isn't that Pokémon from the picture? That's a real-life Iron Boulder! That thing is built! Wow! Rumor says that this fellow charges, charges its horns with energy, then uses them to plow through everything in its path. Hehehe! If that were true, then this thing would be a real fearsome threat to face! Now let me just snap a couple photos here. Just of your face, that's it. This could mean the other Pokémon I showed you is real too. Report back to me if you find it, okay? Oh, so I gotta, I gotta talk to her again. Alright, um, I really thought maybe it would have been like, oh, if you had found both Iron Boulder and Iron Crown, it would, it would, you know, both interactions would happen one after the other, but I guess not. A real Iron Crown, it's so, so Mecha! Rumor has, that this fellow can fire off beams from its horns that'll cut through anything at all? Hehehe! If that were true, then this thing would be a real fearsome threat to face! Let me cap, snap a couple photos of your face. Real cute. Ah, you actually went and found them both? I can't even be surprised. That's disliking, Gruffalo14! Between you and me, I was having a hard time focusing on my own work. I couldn't keep my mind off of those photos. You saved me. I know I didn't promise any rewards or anything, but I've gotta thank you for putting the mystery to rest. Here you go, this prize is a real catch. A sport ball. Wow! A special Pokéball that was used during the bug-catching contest in the Johto region. I've never played a, I've never played a Johto game, so I don't really, I don't really know the relevance of this and, yeah. It's wild how much mystery is left in the world, isn't it? When you're a kid, you could just run wholehearted wherever you want, but it's not so easy when you get older. You keep running, Gruffalo14, find out new Pokémon, have grand adventures, do it for me! And now I think I'd better get back to work. Alright, very cool. And uh, there is also another thing I wanna do. And it involves us, flying. We gotta, you have to fly up to the uh, the terrarium core, cuz um, apparently there's um, something you can find if you go to the top of it, of the other terrarium core. And you could um, some cool items you can find there. Yeah. Oh, and also I did uh, talk to a, I did talk to a Snacksworth off-screen about the uh, the rest of those um, meals for the legendary Pokémon. I think it was on like, it was on like, two or three I hadn't done yet. But I think the rest of them I need to do like, group quests for. Or, that's like, things you need to do with like, friends in the union circle. Unfortunately, I do not have any friends, so um, I can't do that. Being lonely is sad. So um, yeah. And uh, yeah, it has um, I know it has um, it has been a little while since I made a Pokémon Violet video. Or actually, the last time I made a Pokémon Violet video was uh, as of record, as of recording this, it was on the uh, the 20th of January. Which was like, at least eight days ago. Not that long, isn't that long ago, but it feels, it feels long ago, you know? Hey, probably cause I've been doing um, I've been making a few uh, Pikmin 4 videos and also played Mariner's Wonder. I, I mean, the reason I've been, I did like, a couple extra Pikmin 4 videos was um, I kinda wanted to, to help get it caught up with some of the rest of the series. I mean, mostly cuz like, some of these, I'm finishing up some of these series, like uh, Mariner's Wonder and um, finishing up Mariner's Wonder and um, obviously I'm gonna be finishing up this series eventually. And so uh, yeah, I just kinda wanted to maybe do a little more Pikmin 4 videos. You know, just get, I'll be like, alright, now that we're at the top here, what did we get? A gold bottle cap. An ability patch, a patch that can be used to exchange the regular ability and um, it's kind, it's basically like an ability capsule, but it has a give you a higher chance of giving up Pokémon's hidden ability. That's that. And 50 Stellar Terror Shards. Cool. Alright. Well um, that's about everything I wanted to do here, so what I wanted to do for uh, this video is, we're good, it requires us to go to the Crystal Pool in Kitakami. There's a uh, there's a little secret thing that uh, that you could do, that's really cool. And um, you can only, you can only do this um, you can only do this um, after you beat the other main story, because it requires um, you, you need to have Terapagos in your party. So uh, I'mma just put it in the party real quick. Sorry, I dropped it. Sorry, I think you need to have Terapagos in your party and then I think you need um, oh! Uh, we're just, the thing's happening. I think it's happening cuz I do have Terapagos on my party. Yeah, you gotta go to the Crystal Pool, you gotta have Terapagos in your party and something like here is gonna happen. Hello! Whoa. Oh, hello!
Well now, this is a curious development. Have I somehow broken through the boundaries of space-time? And who are you?
Hi Professor Toro! Professor?
Have we met? If so, I'm sorry, but I don't seem to recall it. I am Professor Toro. I research Pokémon in Area Zero and yet...
Hi Marida!
What? This Pokémon, is this the Iron Serpent?
We call it Maridon. Or at least that's kind of the name you would give it.
Is that right? So its name is Maridon?
Hmm, that's a good name.
From the clues, you've already let slip, I suppose I would have to conclude. From my perspective, this must be the future?
Ah, yes, cuz this, this is the actual Professor Toro, not the uh, not the AI. He, so like, we somehow managed to pluck the real Professor Toro from like, the past and brought him here. Hmm, that's uh, that's kinda crazy.
Though of course, the complexities of space-time are beyond count. It's possible that our encounter might not even be occurring in a timeline connected to my own. Perhaps this meeting is nothing more than a fleeting miracle. Why don't we exchange as much useful data as we can, in what little time that fate has gifted us?
Uh, yeah, sure. Uh, hi, it's um, nice meeting you in person, but also, you're uh, you're kind of a terrible father to Arvin. Does, does it have to say that? I'm sorry.
Is there anything that you would like to ask? Why are you here? I don't precisely know the cause. I was analyzing some recent data in my secret lab one moment, for the next, I was standing here before you.
Yeah, we literally just plucked him from the past and brought him here, crazy.
Perhaps this is the influence of the crystal Pokémon that lies dormant in that place. Or perhaps the cause lies with you and I. Is there anything else you wish to ask me? What are you studying now? I am researching methods to catch Pokémon that live in different timelines, so I might transport them to the present day in my own timeline. It's found, sounds fantastical no doubt, but I am drafting plans now for a machine that may achieve it.
And, that said machine nearly tried to end the world, so uh, we can't stop it, so, yeah.
You see, this book captured my imagination when I read it as a child and has never let go. But progress has been slow and beset by failures. I haven't left my lab in quite some time now. I desperately hope that I might glean some new insight from this conversation, so I can finally make some progress and return home. Anything else you wish to ask me?
What about your family?
Oh, you even wish to know about my private life? I do have family, a son. He is probably at home right now. Well, no, I suppose "right now" would be inaccurate. Whenever and wherever he, wherever he is, I imagine he must be quite lonely.
Yeah, no, duh!
Now, let us trade places in this, in this exchange. I'd say the time has come for my own questions. What is this place? It doesn't appear to be anywhere in Paldea.
This is the land of Kitakami.
So we're at Kitakami's Crystal Pool, eh? I remember reading about it in certain texts. It's said to be a place where water wells up from the ground imbued with terastal energy. It would seem that I have shifted quite far in both space and time. My next question then. That Pokémon you have, the Iron Serpent, ah, I mean, Maridon, tell me more about it. Found it collapsed on a beach, it's precious partner to me, you can ride it all over the place, um, I found it collapsed on a beach. Did you really? Then I wonder whence it came and how it happened to arrive at that beach. Though it appears you don't know much about the creature's exact origins yourself. Hmm? That book you have there, I don't recognize its cover. What is it? The Hidden Treasure of Area Zero? Would you let me see it for just a moment?
Oh yeah, Briar's Book, uh, yeah, here you go.
Descriptions of the Area Zero Under Depths? And, and the Record of Terapagos's Awakening? Who is this Briar to have written such a work?
She's a descendant of Heath.
Now wasn't that something? A descendant of the author of the original Violet Book. Exploration runs in the family, I see. At any rate, that is a book that would ignite the imagination of any true scientist. I'm sorry, but I simply must have the time to read this book more thoroughly. Oh, the mist is closing in once again. I assume this means our time is near its end.
Aw, right on, sad!
I wish I could spend longer with you. You getting to know the Iron Serpent. But I must hurry. That book, I imagine it must be quite valuable. It wouldn't feel right for me to claim it without offering you any recomp, recomp. An exchange though. An exchange then, though I hate to part with someone so precious to me. Would you consider trading me that book for my copy of the Violet Book?
Uh, I mean, I can't, I can't, I can't read Briar's Book anyway, so, sure, I can have it. You obtained the Violet Book. Hmm, a record of an expedition to the great creator of Paldea, given to you by Professor Toro. The book has the name "Toro" written on it in clumsy handwriting. I appreciate this more than you can imagine. Perhaps I should take this chance to go home and enjoy a bit of downtime with a good book.
This is where we part, fellow adventurer and Iron Serpent. How lucky we were to beat across space and time. I bid you adieu.
Bye Professor Toro! Oh, new uh, new loading screen, loading screen. Oh, that's a sunset now. Yeah, and the, and the Violet Book is back. Oh, alright. And that was, that was, that was actually kinda cool! And I'm back in a, I'm back in Paldea! Good job, funny enough, that's uh, that's actually kinda what I wanted to do after the um, after I did that thing with Toro, the Crystal Lake, is um, I didn't know how long the, I didn't know how long that scene was gonna be, but um, I guess, since it's over now, um, there is a, there is another thing I wanted to do, um, there was another thing I wanted to do in a, turns up post-game, but I didn't know if that was gonna be its own video or not, but I guess um, not, oh yeah, yeah, we can um, it's um, it's actually a, a thing relating to uh, to Team Star. Or that you, you have to do the um, you have to do the uh, the thing with uh, Toro at the Crystal Lake first. The Crystal Pool, or, then we can um, then we can, here, and here's Jacomo and Ari! Here, Ari looks, she looks so different without um, the outfit and the uh, the different colored hair. Honestly, I kinda preferred her with the other colored hair, but eh, it is what it is, right? Oh, Gruffalo14! Not every day we get to see him around the academy, huh? For sure, we're not in the same grade as Gruffalo14 either, so it's lucky we bumped into him. You doing alright Pope? Not sure what to make of that dumbfounded look you got going on there. I can't like, I know you! Oh, that's right, I forgot we're not wearing our usual outfits today. Man, now that you mention it, I guess this is the first time you're seeing our, us looking all proper in our academy uniforms, huh? Jacomo, I, I still recognize you, I mean, the hair is kind of a dead giveaway. Eesh, now I feel all awkward about it. But hey, let's clear things up. It's me, Jacomo, or DJ Vice me catch me at the deck. Ari here, but I'm sure that was obvious. Oh, I could, I could never forget you Ari. You behemoth of a beautiful woman. Oh wait, the, it's a remix of the uh, the Team Star boss theme. It's a, but it's different, it's like a more like, friendlier remix, cuz you know, they're now, they're now back to attending school and whatnot. We came in today to take some makeup tests. Think it is about time we started clawing back all that learning we missed out, while we were holed up in our bases. Our Team Star outfits aren't all that practical for tests and things, so we came in our new school uniforms today. Hey Ari, think Gruffalo14 could help us out with our ongoing sitch? Hey, that's right, great idea Jacomo! Uh, can I help you with something? We've got a little proposal for ya. How'd you like to be a tutor? Me? A tutor? Jeez, one step at a time, maybe we should start by explaining what's going on? Oops, right you are Ari. So uh, okay, basically, the other Team Star bosses are having a rough time a bit. You remember Melly, Ortega and Atticus, right? Those three, yep. They've been taking makeup tests like us, but they sure ain't passing them. They might actually have to repeat the year, which would suck after all the effort they put in to come back to school. More you ask, me and Ari have already tried tutoring them ourselves. But it didn't go well, at all. Nope, you know, I seriously didn't think those three'd have such a hard time. I mean, for me, it feels like all you need to do, all you, all you need to pass tests is learn formulas and memorize stuff. Guess I can't, just can't wrap my head around what is they can't wrap their heads around. And I'm only good at teasing people if it's to do with sports or exercise. We heard from Penny that your grades are pretty decent. I bet even Ortega and the others would perk their ears up if we're dropping by to teach them. Which looks us right back to my opening refrain. Think you can help tutor for us? Yeah, I'd be happy to help. Thanks so much Gruffalo14, you really are the best. Oops, almost forgot. We gotta keep this under wraps, okay? No telling Penny. Alright, alright, I won't tell Penny then. We've stressed her enough, her out enough for one lifetime, there's no way we could bother her with this. This'll be our little secret, okay? We'll be right here, so come let us know when you're ready to start. I mean, I'm ready to start now. Oh, let's get to this! You all set to tutor the other Team Star bosses up to test-bossing level? Yeah. Music to my ears, let's go lay down a killer study session! Um, and we're also very good to see the rest of the uh, the Team Star bosses in a regular uniform. But here's Ortega and Atticus. Ortega looks basically the same and Atticus, well, I mean, we know what Atticus looks like under the hood. So um, yeah. Sup gang? Studying hard I hope? Well, we were before you and your big mouths showed up. Here to check we're not slacking off, are you? Pretty much, your eyes start glazing over the second I'm out the door. Tell me I'm wrong. Ah, Lady Ari clad in her academy uniform. I feel mine eyes sharpen and my mind focus each time this vision returns to greet me. Is Atticus simping for Ari? Cuz I'm so... Respect! I, I know I'm, I see a man with good taste. If only that focus were helpful for your studies Atticus. Sorry I keep distracting you. Oh ho, what's this? My ninja senses detect the presence of another behind thee, Lady Ari. Come, step forward Dave, that we might see thy face! Hahahaha! Why am I literally, I'm literally just standing behind Ari, like, why am I hiding? Um, um, hello? It's me, ya boy! You? What the? No, 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 why is this happening? Alright, what's wrong Atticus? Ah, I showed up surmised as much. The strength of thy spirit precedes thee as ever, good fellow. Never mind that, Jacomo, explain! What's Gruffalo14 doing here? Hey now, be nice, Gruffalo14. Wait, no, Professor Gruffalo14 is gonna be your tutor. Oh glad hidings, I am truly grateful to hear it. He's gonna be what? Since when? You can't just go stomping around deciding stuff like this without asking anyone, Jacomo! And you, we don't need a tutor. Do us a favor and total on home, would you? Hey, Ortega? Gruffalo14 kindly agreed to come here and help us out, so talking to him with that kind of attitude... Is unacceptable, right? Oh god, Ari's getting real mad, she's getting real mad! God, yeah, yeah, no, totally, I, sorry Ari. Sorry who? Uh, um, what I meant was, sorry Gruffalo14. Go! I'm sorry, just kidding, trying to take over the fact, literally, Ari was literally like, an angry mother for like, like a quick sack there. I love it. Oh god, I do not, remind me not to get on Ari's bad side, okay? Ah, Lady Ari is in a menacing mood. What a vision of unusual rarity. Hey, don't worry about Ortega, he just doesn't wanna, you see him floundering. Hey guys, we seem to have lost Melly. Where'd she go? Lady Mella declared her wish to stretch her legs minutes before your, before your arrival. She departed rather suddenly and has not returned since. Well, we all know Mella, she just wandered off cuz she doesn't feel like studying. I hate to say it, but I guess that's probably true. Sorry about this Gruffalo14, but you think you can go find Mella for us? She'll be somewhere in the academy for sure. We'll stay on standby here and get everything prepped for our killer study session. Sorry to keep relying on you like this. I hope you find Melly without much trouble. Um, I'll be fine, I will, I will find Bella, no trouble hopefully. She's um, she's in the schoolyard. And um, I, I do kinda remember this in the, in the, in the trailer. Remember we, we briefly saw like, a bit of Mella, but we couldn't like, but I don't think, we couldn't recognize her, cuz you know, she's in her, a different look and whatnot. And uh, speaking of, here she is. Oh, she um, she definitely looks a lot better without those uh, those knee-high boots. Eh, anyways. Huh? Oh, hey Gruffalo14. Mella, is that you? Seriously? You have eyes, don't you? Obviously it's Mella you're talking to. Don't got that, that fiery attitude. Oh, right, I guess I'm not decked out in my usual gear today. Ari made a big fuss about wearing our uniforms for this study group thing, so yeah, it's not like I had much of a choice. What are you doing here anyway? Uh, I came to raid your base! No, no, I've been looking for you. Wow, what's the occasion? You itching for another showdown or something? Uh, studying. Oh, okay, you came up here to bring me back to the classroom, huh? Guess time got away for me while I was admiring the veggies. Might as well get going then. Even without the boots, she does a weird walk. Why? You don't have those boots anymore, you can walk like a normal person! Or I guess she's just really good at long strides, I guess. Sup amigos? Melly, welcome back! And Gruffalo14, thanks so much for finding her. So, where were you lazing around this time? Eh, you know, here and there. Lady Mella, is something amiss? Ah, we're all good, right? Dream study team's all here, that's what counts! Times are wasted, so I say let's hit the books! Take it away Professor Gruffalo14, 14, these three are counting on ya! Alright, so I guess we gotta maybe, talk to each of them one at a time and uh, see how we can help them. Um, talk to Mella first. Hello? Or um, I guess not, do I gotta talk to you guys or something? Leave the music to me, I'll keep a steady stream of lo-fi chill beats playing for ya. Yeah, yeah, that's, the music, it's literally like, a lo-fi remix of the Team Star boss theme. I hope everyone tries their best. I don't know, what have I meant to do? Alright, okay, we talked Atticus first, alright. What I know is that I might, that I know not, I ha, I have fathomed the depths of my own ignorance. Ah, noble sensei, comest thou to proffer me a helping hand? Yeah? My deepest thanks. Mathematics is the scourge of my existence, in particular, arithmetic, 'tis an unsolvable mystery. Well, same, I, I struggle with math sometime, I struggled with maths. It's literally why I switched to personal finance at high school, cuz maths was just getting too hard for me. But since my true calling lies in garment design, I feel I need not concern myself with numbers. They have not to do with fashion after all. Uh, no, you'll need numbers. Hmm, skill in mathematics will still be of service to me, you say? I do not quite follow. I think I know what Gruffalo14's getting at. It's like with our Team Star outfits, remember? We ended up spending a lot of money on them. As indeed we should, one must not shy from exp-
As indeed we should, one must not shy from expense when creating objects of great quality.
Well, we had reams of fabric left over at the, after the outfits we made, remade. Don't you think we could have saved more money there?
I, I cannot deny it, tis a fair point. Now that I think of it, the garment's dimensions and the cost of materials demand calculation. And if selling one's creations profit margins too come into play, a designer who pays heed to such figures and sons which surely provides a superior artisan. Twould seem my thinking was naive. I had turned mine eyes from the inconvenient truth. That decides it, my heart is changed and my mind made up. From now on, I will devote myself to the study of mathematics. Ayah!
Ha! I love these guys. I love these guys so much.
Sorry, I kinda butted in on your tutoring just now, Gruffalo14. I'm glad it all worked out, though. Thanks to you, Atticus seems really inspired to study. He's the type that gets totally absorbed once he's fired up, so I'm sure he'll be just fine.
Um, I'm sure he will be. I'm sure he will. Uh, let's go Ortega.
Ah, how am I supposed to know this? I don't get it.
Back off now, see how it's gone.
Don't think I didn't see you and your smug face hovering here, you've got some nerve. You realize I'm a second-year student, right? I'm an entire year above you!
Yeah, so what?
Hmm, Ari says we need to let you help, so fine, you can try to tutor me or whatever. But I'll be shocked if you could get this literature stuff to sink in. I mean, how am I supposed to know how some made-up characters in a story are feeling? See, the protagonist in this book is the mom in the Mousehold family. Her name's Mama Mousehold. We're supposed to analyze why she calls Papa Mousehold terrible in this passage. Mama Mousehold's eyes glittered with tears. It was clear from the letter Papa Mousehold had left, she would never get to see him again. Toying with my feelings right to the end, you really are a terrible thing.
She must really think she's terrible, she must actually love him a lot, we can't know what's in her heart. She must really think he's terrible.
Huh, maybe you're not half the other tutoring after all? The answer was staring at me right in the face. Why did I even bother overthinking this?
Okay, now, hold up. Why would they ask you to analyze, Seth, if the answer's written right there? I just feel like that's not the right call.
Oh, I think I might have done it. Maybe I made the wrong choice there.
Hey, Jacomo's calling you out, are you sure you really know your stuff? I'm starting to think you're as bad as I am at understanding how people feel. You know what, I've seen all I needed to see. I think I'll be better off studying by myself. So feel free to total on home, professor. Tell us three spydops whose brotherly bonds are even more tangled than the webs they weave.
Ah, another family soap story! Alright, hi, Mella. Man, man, this is hard. Huh? What are you looking at, Gruffalo14? Oh, yeah, you're a tutor now, aren't ya? Yep. Alright, man, I was just doing some practice questions. Here, let me know if you think this one's true or false. You can get new Pokémon only by catching them yourself or training with other trainer. Um, that is false, evolution is a thing.
Yeah, that's what I thought too. Can't go forgetting about Pokémon you hatch from eggs. Okay, next one. What is the name of the gemstone that glows over a Pokémon's head when it terrastilids?
That is a... Terra jewel.
Yeah, that sounds about right. Guess it makes sense you know all about this, seeing as you have your own Terra orb. Either way, terrastilizing is pretty awesome, don't you think? Only outstanding students get to have a Terra orb all for themselves, so... Okay, next one. This has zills to do with tests, but, uh, I wanna ask you something. I don't know how to put it, though, it's a tricky one. You gotta promise not to laugh, okay? So, uh, how important do you think dreams are?
Like, when we sleep, like, or, like, I should go, there's literally a ha-ha.
Exactly, I'm talking about the future. What we wanna be when we're older, that kinda stuff. I've got no idea about all that right now. Meanwhile, most of Team Star seems like they've got it figured out. They've got proper dreams. Even the veggies in the schoolyard are doing their best to grow, you know? I wish I had their kinda direction. I mean, what'll hap? And if I never figure it out, what if I'd ever find a dream to chase? Honestly, I get scared just thinking about it.
You have your art, don't you?
Huh? How'd you know I joined the art club?
Mella, there was, I literally did a whole side, there's a little side story with Penny about it.
Well, whatever, that's just a hobby anyway, not like I'm gonna do arts and earn a living. Wait, now that I think about it, Mr. Dragonbrows does art for his job. He always looks like he's having a great time at school. It's like he's not working at all. If I could do something like that, if I could paint for a living, that'd be crazy fun. Do you think that could be it? Is it really okay to call that my dream?
For sure.
You're right, that's gotta be it. That's my dream. Man, I feel like a whole new person. Thanks, Gruffalo14.
You continued to tutor Team Star for a while.
Alright, gang, I'd say it's about time we cue the outro and wrap up today's study session.
Yes, great effort all around, does everyone feel like they made progress today?
I guess I did okay. Sure feels like we didn't need a tutor to tutor, though.
Well, I'm glad that even arithmetic can be enthralled when engaged within earnest. Thanks to our esteemed tutor, I feel enlivened as a rubber room drenched in poison.
I feel like someone's used to defog on me, man. I'm seeing everything so clearly, knowledge is just pouring itself into my brain. Hmm, it looks like we had some mixed results, but we should be okay for the makeup tests, at least. Gruffalo14, it really was kind of you to help us out. We prepared a little thank you gift from all of us, so here you go.
And a pair of wise glasses. Uh, I think I might already have one of those, bud. Thanks, Ari. Modified Uniform A, Modified Uniform B, Team Star sunglasses. Or sunglasses, Team Star gloves, Team Star heels, Team Star helmet, and Team Star case.
And let's do Team Star poses together, too. Here, I'll teach you how to do it.
You learned the hasta la vista emote from Ari.
Oh, cool! So, I'm now an honorary member of Team Star. Cool!
Huh, guys, what are you all doing here?
Uh-oh, busted... Penny? Ish, busted. Look what I just said!
Um, I was just walking down the hall and saw you all in here. But, but that's fine, no one asked me to join, so I should just leave, shouldn't I? Sorry about that, see you later.
Lady Penny, wait!
It's not what you think, Penny, hear us out!
So, what happened was... Fade to black. And then fade out of black. Basically what happened.
Yeah, I thought you all decided not to talk to me anymore.
We would never. That's what it must have looked like, though, huh? Sorry we made you worry.
We just didn't wanna drag you into another one of our messes. Our bad, our bad, Penny.
Uh, apology not accepted.
Wait, for real?
Why do you guys get to decide what, that I'd just be weighed down by your problems? And, I'm your friend, right? So, you should come bother me more, lean on me, that's what'd actually make me happy.
Oh, Lady Penny.
A- and if things get really bad, I could just hack into the school system and fix your grades anyway. What? It's a terrible idea.
Yeah, yeah, isn't that taking it a bit far?
Uh, sorry, that was a joke. I was just trying to lighten things up in here, but I guess that was pretty out of character.
Well, I had to hear it. If you were serious, they would've had to pump on some sense into ya.
But, but also, well before, I'm actually a pretty good tutor, you know? So feel free to ask me for help with studying and stuff anytime.
Lady Penny, we are honored by thy generosity. Uh, does that mean we gotta get lectured by Gruffalo14 and Penny now? Hell, I guess there are worse things.
Ha-ha, careful, my man, that was dangerously close to a straight-up compliment. You can just come right out and say you like the idea, we all know you're thinking it.
Indeed, I need not even use my ninja senses, so childishly apparent are thy true feelings.
What? As if you know what's in my head!
Bro, Ortega's acting like a real Sindri right now.
You guys haven't gotten the first clue about me. Try getting to know me before it's bouncing nonsense, huh? You're all the worst!
Hey, guys, I, I think we broke Ortega. Ah... Ah... I enjoyed that, that was, that was real cute, I liked that. Alright, so, that it? But, yeah, no, that's it, the only real thing is there is Mr. Seguaro's thing, but I, I can't really do that. So, um... Quickly check, see, but, yeah, Jacomo and Ari aren't there anymore, so, um... I, um, I guess that's it for this episode. So, that was fun, we did, um... We had a little talk with, uh, Professor Turo, and, um, we helped out Team Star with studying, although I maybe, may have failed Ortega, probably, but... But, um, yeah! Yeah, I also never mentioned, uh, this is the, uh, this is the new team I'm gonna be rocking for, um, I'm gonna be doing, using this team for, um, some of the, the post-game stuff. And, and the, uh, the epo- and the, uh, the epilogue for the DLC, that, um, that's gonna be happening sometime soon. So, uh, yeah, thank you guys so much for watching! If you guys enjoyed this video, please be sure to leave a like down below, comment, subscribe, click the notification bell so you don't miss an upload made by me. Thanks for watching, I will see you guys next time. Goodbye!